Downtown Meridian but serves the Winko area and that business park just north of us, excuse me, south of us, it is less productive. And we can talk a little bit about why when we look into the future. So, that's not such a rosy picture when you think about transit in the city of Meridian, but that's where we're starting from. The other thing, though, that I want to call out is the city of Meridian just completed a community survey for 2017. And as we were looking through that, there were a couple of points that related to public transportation that I wanted to mention. And that is that as related to the other 30, I think there were 39 different satisfaction measures that were looked at in that, in that community survey, public transportation was one of the four that was kind of below the regional and national averages for the city of Meridian satisfaction with public transportation. And that, it's important to note that's not just the national but also regional averages. Also, of the four highest priority measures that were identified in that, in that survey, transportation, education, growth and development, jobs, economic development and pathways, public transportation has a direct impact on, on four of those five. Transportation, obviously, growth and development, jobs and education, and it extends the, the importance of pedestrian and bicycle pathways. It also, communities can also leverage investments in transit to, to build some of those pedestrian and bike pathways. In other words, there, there's direct linkages between a lot of those priorities that were identified in the, in the survey and what public transportation can do, can do. We also, was interesting to note that there was, that a majority of, of Meridian residents supported the idea of increasing funding for public transportation. So, that's all positive. And why we are excited about talking about where transit can go in the future, not just for the city of Meridian but all across the Treasure Valley. So, what Valley Connect is doing is it looks at Communities in Motion, which is the regional, the regional plan that's developed by Compass. And, and we, we look out at where the region is going, both in terms of development as well as priorities for transportation. And we asked ourselves, where should transit be if we were to be on, on track with the vision that's in, in Communities in Motion? And so that's where we started. What this map represents here is an example of the type of network that could be in place if we had the resources, if Valley Regional Transit had the resources to serve the amount, provide the amount of public transportation that is called for in, in Communities in Motion. And so what I'm going to spend the rest of the presentation doing is talking about what that network looks like and the advantage or the value that that can bring to the city of Meridian. But one more bit of kind of peer context, when we look at where Valley Regional Transit is and compare it to several of peers across the northwest and, and actually not just the northwest but also in four different states, and we look at the amount of, of resource that's spent on, on operations per capita, the biggest thing that stands out is how, how little we in the Treasure Valley spend on a per capita basis for public transportation operations. And so compared, we spend about $27, $28 a year on, on public transportation operations per capita. And when we compare that to places like Spokane, Reno, Tucson, and Madison, they on average spend in the order of $140 per capita. So with, when we look at just that difference, it's easy to understand how they're able to provide higher levels of service and have a much broader reach of, of their transit network. So this next slide looks at the number of hours in those, in those peer cities and where we have just over 120,000 annual service hours. That's just a representation of the amount of service that's out there every day. Many of our peers have almost five times that, which again is simply a reflection of the amount of investment they're putting into the service. And so if we were to have a similar base, we, we could have a system of about 500,000 hours, which is what that original network map represented. What could you do with about 500,000 hours spread through, across the county? And some high level estimates of potentially as many as 12 million annual boardings, which is, we have, we're just at 1.2 today, so about a tenfold increase in the number of boardings. So, and that is interesting because what we find is when you, it's not a linear relationship between the amount, the amount that you invest in transit and the return on investment. And that's because particularly when you're starting at as low a base as we have in the Treasure Valley, when you have service that comes every 30 minutes to every hour, it's simply not as attractive to people to, to, to make many of their transportation decisions on. However, as, what this chart is showing is as you look at our peers who invest higher percent, higher amounts of operating per capita and you compare that to the boardings per hour or the productivity, so this is how many people are getting on the bus per hour, you can see that there's a relationship between more service and not just more riders but more riders per hour, right? So, in other words, as you, once you're able to push beyond this, this threshold of 30-minute service, you can start to realize even more boardings per hour than, than what we have today, which is how you can increase, how you can get a tenfold increase in ridership with only maybe a five-time increase, increase in the amount of, in the amount of resource, which is important when we think about, how do we, how do we think about scaling public transportation to meet the, the travel demands that we in the Treasure Valley face? The other thing that's interesting about that is when you look at the cost then per boarding, so if you're, if you're interested in cost effectiveness, there's an inverse relationship there. The more people you can, as you increase productivity, your cost per, per rider will decreases because you're able to spread those costs over more riders. And so when, what we find is that as we're interested in achieving higher levels of efficiency, there are times when it makes sense to increase the amount of investment. And that's simply so you can get service that is attractive enough to people that they can begin to make their daily decisions on where and when transit comes. And so that's what we are trying to illustrate with the Valley Connect program. And it allows us to really make Meridian become a central hub for the Treasure Valley in transportation as it relates, specifically as it relates to, to transit. So what I wanted to do now is walk through a little bit that network and show the ways that transit could connect many of the, of the destinations that are important to Meridian to the broader community. So, starting with connections to Boise. So, today as we described, all of the services that connect Meridian to downtown Boise or Nampa are along the I-84 corridor. There's, there's no transit service to developments along Eagle, at least very far north of I-84, and there's no transit service to, to the Village. This, we would propose to extend service from the Town Square Mall out, out Emerald and Pine to Eagle, coming around to, and then serving, serving the Village. What this does is it creates east-west connection between Meridian and Boise, connecting the two major malls and providing many opportunities for people to travel between, between those locations. And the one thing that's hard to show in a map is levels of service. So we're not just talking about this connection, but we're talking about how often is that connection available to people? And so the red lines here, these are services that come every 15 minutes or more throughout the day. So this is, that, this is more than anything, but it's similar to the levels of service that are on State Street in the peak period, but it's, it's even more than that. And so these are opportunities where people can simply get out and ride, ride the, the bus to get where they need to go, whether that's to Sensi Commons there at Eagle and Pine or to, to the Village or any of the development along, along that corridor. Other extensions would be out Eustick, so connecting, connecting Meridian and Boise via, again, starting at the Village, running out Eustick and then going downtown, through town actually over to Broadway. So you end up connecting a whole lot of these, these types of destinations. The west side of Boise, the west bench of Boise connected into, into Meridian. The Village really becomes potentially a hub for, for transit where people can come to, both for the, the amenities and services that are at the Village but also to connect to other parts of the region. And then extending the Overland route, down Overland all the way to Eagle and then up to, up to the Village. So the other thing that we, that's really important that we've been working with Caleb and others as we've put this network together is to think about how, how does the placement of these routes support or not the development that's envisioned by the city of Meridian? And so that's really the key part that we are interested in working with the city on is to say, where are the corridors where you see development? How can we try and connect those with high levels of service so you can take advantage of the transit service and, and help address the transportation issues that a lot of the community is interested in, in resolving? So these are all services oriented towards the east of Boise. But if we look at other ways that we can connect to Canyon County, again, kind of using the, using the Village as, as an anchor or hub, head out, this is Cherry Lane, out to the CWI in, in Nampa, which becomes another hub on, on that side connecting to other parts of Nampa but also the intercounty services. So this connects downtown Meridian, east, west Meridian to the education services at CWI directly. And also open up service along Chindon, again, using CWI as an anchor but serving north Meridian and into, into Boise along, along the Chindon Boulevard. So these, the green lines here are express services, so these would be intended to be making longer distance trips, connecting people to, to jobs and throughout the day, but really trying to make similar types of, of trips is what we see on the intercounty services today.
And, and that would be how frequent?
So...
The green line is...
Right. I think we're here, we're talking about every 30 minutes.
And, and you know, driving Chindon is not express?
It is, you're right.
Okay.
And so that's one thing that, that we are also looking at with the Valley Connect program is to identify not only where the service makes sense but what kind of capital improvements we need to be looking at to keep buses from being stuck in the same kind of traffic. I mean, so long as we're on the same road, you're going to have some of that conflict, but there are things that you can do to help it move through a particular intersection or to help, help jump past some of the, the worst parts of congestion along, along any given corridor. And so once we start looking at where we, where we want to focus our efforts, we can start having those conversations. Where does it make sense for us to be prioritizing transit movements? Where does it make sense for us to, and then coming back to the development side, how do we ensure that all of those, those transit investments, the capital investments and the development all support one another? Excuse me. We would continue to serve the I-84 corridor. This is very similar to the Route 40 today, serving CWI. This would be sort of coming every 15 minutes because we know it's a high demand corridor today and will continue to be in the future, getting off at 10 Mile and staying on Overland all the way through Eagle. And so this provides an opportunity to, to along the way between Nampa and Boise, serve a developing area of Meridian, whether that's Silverstone or all the development along, along Overland, making connection, there, there are apartments that are going in, they're next to Roaring Springs as well as they're next to, to Mountain View High School. So how can we create opportunities for those developments that are there already to be on the way to connect either to the facilities in downtown Boise, services in downtown Boise, whether that's Boise State or the jobs that are there, as well as the, the educational opportunities at CWI? Today, we, our services, it's line Y, they all go into downtown. We have, there's been lots of call for service out to Micron, and we would be interested in, in providing that kind of service and what, the role that Meridian plays actually in this kind of scenario is it becomes a crossroads for people, whether they're headed to downtown or headed out to Micron, they make that decision before they get on I-84 there at, at Eagle. And so you, you have those op, Eagle, excuse me, Meridian is well-placed because it has the opportunity to take advantage of both those directions. It also is on the access north-south. And so when we talk about, when we've been out talking to the city of Kuna and they're meeting their needs, their needs run really quickly into the needs of Meridian. Once they connect to services there at I-84, if they were to continue, which we propose that they do, into downtown Meridian, that starts to fulfill some of the, some of the local Meridian circulation needs. So connecting Kuna, again, meeting up with the transit hub at the Village, also then serving the, the apartments and other development that is parallel to Eagle, so this would be using Records and Alley so that you are able to serve those higher, higher density developments, making connection to east-west services there on Chindon. And I hope what you're also seeing as we go through all this is that each one of these routes become a piece in, in a broader network that works together. And so you have both east-west service and north-south service, and they're intended to work together. They're intended to help people make both of those types of movements. Connections into Eagle, so this would be down Linder, serving Meridian High School, and then downtown Meridian on into Town Square Mall after serving the Village. So another thing that we're interested in doing is how do we improve at transit access actually to, to the high schools, which provides an opportunity for families who have teenage, not students, they're children, how do they get themselves to, to and from their, from their school? So this would connect both Eagle High School, Meridian High School downtown and to the other opportunities at the Village and Town Square Mall. We also are looking to ways to extend into south Meridian where there is, doing a north-south connection down Locust Grove and out to the development, the Hillsdale development, potentially like, because we know that Meridian is developing out that way, how do we make sure that those, that those services get connected with transit? And so there are opportunities to do that as we grow the, the service network. And we're excited about supporting each community as they try and develop with appropriate transit service. And again, look, more kind of local connections within Meridian, connecting them north-south along Meridian out to Chindon where they can either move, travel east or west. So I hope that gives you kind of an understanding of what's possible. The thing that's exciting to me about making presentations like this is we hear a lot of the time, wouldn't it be great if we had a service that did X or Y? And what we, what I wanted to share with you is those things are all doable, they're all possible to do right here. And the only, going all the way back to that original peer comparison, the thing that, the, the most significant thing that keeps us back from doing that is simply the amount that we invest in, in our public transportation service compared to our peers. With, with a comparable amount of resource or investment, we can have the types of connections that people are asking for, we can help address the transportation needs that are on everybody's mind and support the development that, that we all are trying to encourage into the Treasure Valley and, and cultivate. So, the last slide that I want, that we had up here is simply to talk about where the focus of Valley Connect will be. And it is largely a fixed route focus. We're calling fixed route first simply because when we look at the cost effectiveness of what fixed route can do over other alternative types of transportation, by and large, fixed route service is, is far more cost effective. That's not to say there is no role for specialized transportation. We know that they provide an important niche market and we will continue to, to do that. But when we think about where, where can we, what kinds of transportation services will fulfill or support the other types of, of needs that are, that the community is talking about, really addressing transportation needs, supporting development, those we see being folded into developing a robust fixed route network. So where we are is we are soliciting feedback on both the network and the Valley Connect plan generally, and we've been working with the Technical Resource Group. And Caleb sits on that, representing the city of Meridian, and we've been, he's been providing a lot of good feedback about, about where the city is developing and how we can maximize that network to support that development. So we'll continue to refine the suite of transportation options that are available to the city of Meridian as well as look for opportunities to, to develop some support across the many cities that we serve. So as, as you saw, most of those lines didn't stay within the city of Meridian. So it becomes an, an interest in how do we talk about, about these services to the city of Eagle, to the city of Kuna, to Boise, and together we, we can solve the, the transportation issues that we face. And that's what I had. If you have any questions about where we're headed on the fixed route side, after that we'll invite Todd to come up and talk about specialized service.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Stole Roberts.
Stephen, in your pricing, and probably the one that got me was comparing with Tucson, does that include the infrastructure that's already existing? Because like Tucson's got the metro, has, is the pricing in that with such a big difference?
So the, the costs were, were just the operational costs. So the capital costs, we didn't compare. So it was just how much are they investing year after year in operational costs for, for delivering the service? So if, it would include the, well, actually on that one it was just the, it was just the bus, so it didn't, it did not include the operating costs for, for their light rail.
Thank you.
Are there questions? Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Todd?
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you for having me here. My name is Todd Morse, I'm the Community Programs Manager at Valley Regional Transit. I was invited to a budget workshop last month to provide an overview on our specialized transportation, and I kind of wanted to allow an opportunity for me to come back and, and answer any more questions for you guys. And so I really, I have a relatively short presentation talking about our specialized transportation programs that consist of Harvest Transit, which operates solely in the, 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 the community of Meridian. And then we also have a supportive Dial Ride service which supports Meridian residents for traveling outside of the, the service area of Harvest Transit. And so, quick overview of Harvest Transit. It's a free transportation service. It's designed to address the needs of seniors and persons with disabilities. It is a public transportation service, so it's not a taxi but it's kind of, we try to market it as a, as a, as a shared ride system. It is, it incorporates wheelchair-accessible vans, and it operates really just in the, in the heat of the day from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which was a result of some outreach we did with Meridian residents, Meridian seniors, indicating the times that they would prefer to have this service. So here's an overview of the, the ridership on a per-month basis. Program kicked off in, in December. Our new vehicles arrived in March, and you can start seeing some of those upticks in ridership right around March. In, in May, we consolidated, we made some tweaks to the service area where we initially had two service areas, but then we consolidated into one. So if you're wanting to travel anywhere within the Meridian community, you don't have to make any transfers along those vehicles. And then there's some additional items we're looking forward into the future in terms of the operational aspects in, in continuing and to, to improve our, and build on our relationship with Harvest Church and allow them to take even more responsibilities of the, of operations and allow us to kind of take a step back and, and solely serve in an administrative capacity. So there's an overview of the ridership. We don't have June's ridership quite yet, but our overall goal is to, is to receive about, or is to provide about 550 rides per month. As you can see here, we, we're not quite reaching that goal, however, the trends are looking encouraging. So I think that this is probably the most important slide that I wanted to provide is, and hopefully this provides a little bit more of a clean breakdown in terms of the requests for this year as it compares with years previous and how it's split out between the multiple types of specialized transportation services. And one thing I'd like to note is for the third item down, the Dial Ride service, those, those, how I would like to see this, or what I would propose to, to the city is those funds for, for 2017, and we were allowed to, or those are, those are invoiced to City Meridian on a per-use basis. And so halfway through the year, we expended $8,000 of that. So I propose is for, in, in FY '18, we would look, we would kind of cap that at $16,000, and then we would just simply invoice on however many rides were provided. If the rides weren't provided, we wouldn't be providing the, we wouldn't be submitting the invoice. And so hopefully that provides a little bit more clarification in terms of, of the specialized transportation context for, for the city of Meridian. And then in addition to that, there's also an additional grant that we're seeking from Idaho Power for $10,000 to support Harvest Transit. The status of that is unknown and, and we aren't necessarily expecting a, a result on that for a couple of months, as we've seen with some of the other foundations, that can be a, a longer process. And so we'd be requesting the full $69,000 to support Harvest Transit. With that, I guess I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Todd, can you share with us the unique riders of Dial Ride?
Yep.
And maybe also the unique riders for Harvest Transit? I know you presented to the trans, Todd presented to the Transportation Commission last week and shared some information that I thought was, was valuable, but in light of, I think, some of the success with Dial Ride, I'm curious how many unique riders that we have on that system as well?
Sure. So for the Dial Ride service and that, and the data for that was collected from October through March, we had 88 unique riders utilize that system. And for Harvest Transit, which was from, or excuse me, from December through May, we had 114 rider, unique riders utilize that system. And so we, I guess we didn't necessarily go through and do a more in-depth analysis if there's overlap between the two, if, if people that were using Dial Ride were also using the Harvest Transit.
I assume so.
But that's, that's, provides an overview of the, the individuals served.
Thanks, Todd.
Anything further?
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
So that was our presentation. I'm not sure if you have any general budget questions that I could answer or any other questions? If not, we'd be happy to get out of your hair and let you get on with your business.
Okay, anything further from counsel?
Good night.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Todd. Okay, item 6B is, I think that Mr. Nary's kicking this off.
Yes, Madam, members of the council, under city code, each election cycle, every two years, we form a committee of citizens, members of our commission, former council members to discuss the compensation for both mayor and city council going into the election cycle for the next two years. This is the seventh time we've had a, a citizens committee of various folks. This year, Rizos and I partnered to put this together and to get the group together and to have the discussion and get the data that they would need to have the discussion. The members of the committee were former councilman Rowntree, David Ballard, who's here today from the Meridian Transportation Commission, Gretchen Caserati, who's a member of the Meridian Arts Commission, Clint Shiflett is a member of our community business, one of our community business leaders, Marty Schindler from the Downtown Business Association was also a part of that. And then of course, Crystal and I were there as staff to help gather the information. So committees finished their work, it has a recommendation for you, it's in your packet, and Gretchen's here to present the committee's recommendation to you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Indeed, I will. I am Gretchen Caserati, and my address, is that what you said?
Yes.
3725 North Rugby Drive.
You could have given your other address, but thank you.
I, yes, I'm, work at Meridian Library District, and I serve on the Meridian Arts Commission and participated in the Citizens Compensation Committee this year and was honored to have been asked to participate. I always learn so much in my partnership and working with you all in my own work, and so I appreciate having an opportunity to, to continue to learn and to contribute some thoughts in this process. So as, as Bill mentioned, we had met as a group a couple of times, we had a number of questions we asked for, and Crystal and Bill provided a lot of information for us, variety of different reports. And really, we tried to work toward determining what the criteria was we were really evaluating, where we're looking backwards at a performance evaluation or forward to whether or not it was a straight compensation for the positions based on, on the duties. And we looked at the criteria of the size of the city, the subsequent amount of time and complexity of the work being performed, the size of the staff being managed directly by the mayor, peer comparisons both in and out of the state as well as the history of the salaries since 2000 here. And I will also make a note that a point of discussion at the meetings was also public perceptions of public, of public official salaries. That was certainly a consideration that we discussed. And we considered the, as I mentioned, those, any increases, whether or not they were sort of retrospective or looking forward to ensure that the positions themselves are attractive for highly qualified candidates in the future. And then the final piece was how that fits into the overall budget. And as such- And as such, once we went through those, and they're outlined a little more in detail in the report provided to you, the committee unanimously agreed to the following recommendation: That the mayor and city council compensation for salaries be increased up to 3% for the next two years, increasing the mayor's salary to $93,683 in 2018 and $96,496 in 2019, being based on the 3% presently being used by the city in the salary schedules in the budget. Increasing the council salaries, that 3%, to $10,300 in 2018 and $10,609 in 2019, with the council president's salary being noted at $11,330 in 2018 and $11,670 in 2019. And we recommend that all elected officials continue to receive the same benefits that they currently receive. The committee recognizes and is thankful for all of the hard work and dedication that the mayor and the current city council performs presently. We know serving in your roles means long days, challenging issues, and sometimes really tough decisions, but we see you all serving our citizens selflessly. The committee well knows you aren't doing this for the compensation, and we know you may not apply our recommendations, but this recommendation provides us an opportunity to say thank you for your service and for doing such an excellent job in leading the city, to be such a successful and healthy community. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Gretchen. Counsel, any questions for Gretchen or the other committee members?
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Not a question, but thank you and Clint and everyone else on the committee. I've served on this committee previously in between council sessions. So, I know it's a lot of effort and research you do to provide some feedback for us to consider. So, I appreciate and thank you for the time doing so.
Any other comments, questions? I appreciate having the ordinance that does suggest that we have a citizens' committee look at this. And I know that Crystal probably brought this to the committee, is I do think there is another component to it in sitting down with the mayor to talk performance. And I would love to get that feedback, and if you can add that as an element, that would be awesome.
We looked at the city survey, which I think speaks to a great deal of how we were considering your performance, as well as looking at retention rates and the FTE and looking at the organization charts and the complexity of the staff that you're managing. And those were certainly some things that we did discuss. I don't know if that's something further... If anyone has anything to add to that. I think it was a challenge to be playing both roles as an administrator in my own work, separating people from positions. And we tried to sort of do both in this exercise, which was really hard to do, because if you're doing a performance evaluation, it's about the person. But if it's about the positions, you really have to separate yourself for that. And we had a healthy discussion about what does this look like in the future and wanting to maintain a salary that would be competitive for 2019, but also wanting to recognize what a terrific job everyone thinks that you do and how hard we see you working and that... I don't remember who said it, but the bar is very high. So, with all the work that you do and how present and transparent and committed you really are, I think we'd... If it was just on straight percentages, we'd love to give you more.
No, that's certainly not what I was asking. But I... If the committee would be willing to meet one more time and sit down and have a discussion, I would really appreciate that.
We'll volunteer Marty, since he's not here.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Gretchen, thanks for serving on this committee. I think from just speaking as one councilman, this whole process is kind of... Mess is not the right word. It's hard for us to say, yes, we should support giving ourselves a raise. I'm hoping that maybe going through this process, was there a rubric or best practices that you saw in other municipalities that we should look to implement as part of future vision casting? Is there a place that gets this process right? Are we the place that's getting it right? I mean, that's the feedback that I'm hoping to hear from you.
Well, Crystal may be able to speak a little more to process, since she did the communication with the other cities and other HR. So, I'm sure she would have more to add on that. We did... I think the... From where I stand, the piece that we discussed was there... We do see that there should be a balance between putting in something that's more structured and really evaluating current situations, because you can put in a structure or criteria or a rubric, but let's say the market changes, and then, you don't have that ability. And then, you could put... You might find yourself in a situation where it is out of whack with what your actual conditions are in your community, because you're kind of locked into a process. If I'm summarizing this adequately, I think that the sentiment was if we can articulate what the criteria is, that can be passed on to the next committee, because we did consider current market conditions. We looked at tax levies. We looked at... In terms of how this fits into the overall budget and things like that. And the challenge was with other cities is they're all very different, because you might have a city manager, not a mayor, and you might... You know, the peer cities in the region that we looked at from the western states are not all structured the same. And so, when you look at that in the table of comparison, it was really hard to identify patterns or any consistency in that way. Do you have anything to add to that?
Madam Mayor, members of counsel. Gretchen, actually, you articulated that very well. In our efforts to gather information from the different Idaho locations, as well as she mentioned, the western states, when we contacted those individual agencies to get back to whether or not they have a standard practice or guidelines or a rubric, they don't. They do a lot of what we do in gathering a lot of local information, gathering population, gathering the complexity of the work, taking into consideration the direction that the cities are headed. So, not every individual agency had or state had a specific best practice. And that's a challenge that we have when we focus on utilizing this every two years as a process to come up with a solid, fair, marketable recommendation. So, we've tended to continue the best practices that we've established here in Meridian, gather that information, as Gretchen mentioned, maintaining the historical information, discussing with the committee members that differ over the next cycle, two-year cycle, and come forward with what we feel is the... Or they feel is the best recommendation for Meridian.
Follow him? Thank you. And thank you for the group's efforts. And if you're open to having us sit down, I would love to just sit down and chat.
I see nodding of heads, so we'll get that coordinated.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gretchen.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I think this is very good compensation. I think it's something that is deserving of you people. And while it's hard to compare other cities, because no two cities have the same... Some have library districts, some have roads, you know? Some don't have fire departments, some don't have police departments. So, if we need a motion to go forward with this, I'd be glad to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the compensation committee for the next two years.
I have a motion. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I appreciate the great work of this committee, and I'm certainly supportive of the recommended increase for the mayor based on the committee's recommendation. As I mentioned earlier, I just... None of us got into this for the money, and I think that, you know, if I do the math right, I make about 85 cents to a dollar an hour. Doesn't cover the gas for me to get to and from meetings. I know in the past, otherwise, council members have brought up the idea of, boy, if we increased the compensation, perhaps that would attract more people. Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. I think our council is stellar and is well-represented of our community. And again, none of us opt into it for the compensation. So, I struggle with being supportive of an increase in compensation for the council. I appreciate the recommendation and the vote of confidence from the committee. We, as a council, are always sticklers for the budget, and we look at every dollar as important. And while the monetary amount is not significant, to me, I think it... For me at least, it's a commitment to our taxpayers that every dollar is important and that it doesn't change our lives. And if we can return a few bucks back, that's something I'm more supportive of, at least from the council perspective.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Well, I agree with much of what Councilwoman Cavanagh said. I also would like to put my faith in the committee, and I think they understand the amount of work that we do and not that I feel that we are necessarily deserving of a raise. I think we need to, in this case, look past us and the position, and it may or may not. But I think that those are all things that this committee took into account, and I'm not in a situation where I can go over every detail that they did. But I trust them and would like to support their decision or their recommendation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I echo Councilwoman Cavanagh with regard to council pay. When it comes to the increase for the mayor, having nothing to do with yourself, but the position itself, I feel that the job may be commensurate with a higher pay, maybe even six figures, but the position is one of public service, and at its current pay level, is more than sufficient to sustain any size family and live comfortably here in Meridian and be able to perform that service position.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I... With regards to the compensation for the role of mayor, I do agree with Councilman Palmer that it is appropriate. I think the committee's provided valuable information, and the check on it every two years is appropriate. But in reference to the duties of the position and not the person, because people come and go from these seats, but the role remains the same. And we're not like a private business where there's an opportunity for future employees in these roles to start out at a perhaps a different salary that might be commensurate with different experience levels. So, I'm comfortable with the mayor's salary as it is. With regards to the council's compensation, it's sort of a mixed bag for me, because I wouldn't change the salary. I think the increase in compensation has been provided. There's the total cost of compensation for an employee, wages is one part of that, and there's medical benefits that are provided as well, and there's increased costs that the city absorbs on behalf of the employees, including the council, for things such as insurance that effectively are a raise in compensation to the council members. They just receive it in the form of continued benefits at a higher cost the city's absorbing. So, I'm comfortable keeping all the compensation the same. I think the fact that the city's absorbed increased costs, nonlabor costs for the council and mayor is appropriate enough at the time.
Okay.
And, Madam Mayor, I agree with Councilwoman Cavanagh. There's... To compensate the position for the work and time would be much greater discussion. It would be a much more drastic increase. And that's nowhere near the type of individual that this city, I think, needs to run for the money. It's never going to be a job on council. The mayor's office, the role of the executive, is much different. And I could see merit in changing that as well and increasing it. But for council, this has got to be pure community service with some recognition for the time away from family and from your business. But your heart has to be on council for a service purpose.
Okay. Well, Mr. Clerk, I think we have a motion. Will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Cavanagh?
No.
Councilwoman Palmer?
No.
Councilwoman Laura Roberts?
No.
Councilwoman Burton?
No.
Councilwoman Bird?
Yes.
Well, the motion failed.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I've sat in the same seat as these other councilmen many a time on compensation. You know, we don't... But you know, you spend your time away. And I realize the benefits we receive is very, very good. And I think this will probably, if you look back, be the first time I've ever voted for a raise on for the council. So, I don't see any problem with it being defeated. But I do agree that the mayor, definitely, that position needs to be raised. So, somebody else can make a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Maybe then, to simplify it, instead of us trying to do both in one motion, six different ways, we separate them out. That's appropriate. Madam Mayor, I move we maintain the mayor's salary at what it is until the next review.
Okay. Well, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Call for the question.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Cavanagh?
No.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Laura Roberts?
No.
Councilwoman Burton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bird?
No.
All right. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
We're going to be here all day. We have a long meeting ahead of us. I make a motion that we accept the committee's recommendation for the mayor's salary, the recommended percentage amount, but do not accept the recommendation from the committee for council compensation at this time.
Okay. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
You, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. I guess, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Burton.
And I appreciate what you're trying to do, but it blends two things. So, in support of the mayor's increase, but rejecting the council's. So, we'll see where this goes. I don't support the council increase, so if I vote no on the motion, I'm voting no on rejecting the council increase as well, which is something I support. So, I appreciate you trying to speed it up.
Madam Mayor.
Blending it kind of complicates it.
Madam Mayor. Now, the motion was that we accept the mayor's compensation. But we don't take any compensation for the city council.
Correct. And I support...
So, you support the mayor getting raised, but not the council?
No. He... The opposite. He supports...
Oh, I know how he supports. But I mean, that's what the motion says.
Madam Mayor. Mr. Burton, you're welcome to make a substitute motion if you'd like. If I may. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move that we keep the city council compensation as is and not accept the recommendation of the committee as the council compensation.
Second.
And, Madam Mayor, for discussion on that motion, one of the reasons why a lot of people serve up here, Keith, is people like you, who make people fall in love with this community and service. And you're the king behind that, so...
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. But there's been a lot of us.
Okay. So, the substitute motion... Okay, so the substitute motion is to maintain the council's salary as is, declining the increase as recommended by the committee. Is that essentially what you said? Okay. Did I have a second to the substitute?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
With regards to the position of mayor, focusing on the duties of the position itself and not focusing on the person in the seat or the specific performance, because I don't think we have metrics to objectively tie compensation to performance yet, maybe that's future discussion, but in light of that, I would move that we maintain the existing compensation for the mayor and the role of the executive and not accept the recommendations of the committee at this time.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you for your service. Item 6C is Journey of Heroes, a public art installation update, and is Hillary? Oh, there's Hillary.
Okay. Spooky. I don't know. Okay, look quickly, because it might disappear. We'll see what other pictures I have on file. CJ, right now, is passing out the same thing, so if it continues to rotate through these, you're still supported with the images being used. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm before you today, this is actually a nice rotation, okay, to just give you an update on the trail markers that will be, the trail marker images that will be installed in the Journey of Heroes public art installation at Heroes Park. The committee that decided on how these trail markers would be selected consisted of three marine arts commissioners and then the Parks Committee from the Marine and Parks and Recreation Commission. We decided that heroes were to be selected by local schools, so I reached out to local schools first near the park and then also arts-based schools for the recommendations. Nine schools were contacted, and we got five to participate in hero nominations. We asked the schools for a primary hero nomination and a secondary hero nomination in case their original hero was already selected or in case that we couldn't get permission from that hero or their family for image use. With that being said, all of the primary recommendations that were received were not duplicates, so the committee members decided to proceed with contacting the individuals that were recommended for heroes and work on getting artist permissions. At this point, we have all those permissions in place, and Ken McCall, the artist, has worked to obtain those permissions and worked to put together what images would be used. I can go through really quickly the schools and then the heroes that they recommended. Rocky Mountain High School is one mile from the park, and they nominated Alex Fox. He is this bottom person here with his son in the stroller, and his recommendation form is actually here now. He donated his kidney to a special needs teenager. The teenager's mom reached out, kind of looking for a match for her daughter, and Ken's, or Alex's son also suffers from a disability, so he knew what big of an impact that would make, and he didn't know the woman who reached out on Facebook, and he is, in Rocky Mountain High School's eyes, a hero. And he lives in Starr, but he's, our requirements for the hero recommendation were that they're local to Idaho and that they are real, so we didn't want fictional characters, and that's a pretty good example, in my opinion, as well as what a hero is. If you remember, part of the Journey of Heroes artwork installation, I think, was also to encourage people to think about what it means to be a hero. So there's a variety of heroes referenced here. Paramount Elementary School is two miles from the park, and they nominated Dean Brigham, who is their current principal, and he is retiring this year. So that was an honor that their school wanted to bestow on Dean Brigham. Dean Brigham was also my principal at Chaparral Elementary School, so that was really cool to see. The next recommendation is from Heritage Middle School, and they're 2.5 miles away from the park, and they nominated Gregory Pappy Boynton. Oh, so Dean's on the left and Gregory Boynton is on the right-hand side, and he was a pilot in World War II, I believe, and he was also in a popular sitcom, or the focus based on, in a popular sitcom, Ba Ba Black Sheep, and he's from Coeur d'Alene. Pioneer Elementary is an art-based school. They're five miles from the park, and they nominated Kristen Armstrong. And you guys know who Kristen Armstrong is in that picture? Chief Joseph Elementary School is an art-based school, and they nominated, oh, they're 5.5 miles from the park, and they nominated Chief Joseph. Other schools contacted include Willow Creek Elementary School, Hunter Elementary School, Christine Donnell? I don't know how to pronounce that. And then Renaissance High School, and those schools either declined to participate or did not respond to my incessant emails and calls. This is really just to show you guys who has been selected in the process that we used to get to that point and to remind you that those are for the trail markers around the park. The primary installation, that picture that was also handed out to you guys, those images remain the same from the original proposal that was brought before you. So that includes Saigon Juia, police officers, doctors, an astronaut, a firefighter, veterans, Abraham Lincoln, Martin Luther King Jr., Albert Einstein, Amelia Earhart, and Lewis and Clark. We just wanted to provide an update. If you have any questions from me or from Ken, the artist, he's in the crowd today.
This is very nice, Hillary. Counsel, any questions?
I have none, Mayor. Just very nice.
No questions. Thank you very much, and thank you. This is going to be an awesome project. Look forward to seeing it. I knew I heard that somewhere.
I just wanted to quickly go on the record and just say we're excited to welcome this art project into the park. It's been great to see the Arts Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission come together in these joint meetings to manage this process with Hillary's excellent leadership. The materials, I think, have been ordered, fabrication underway. It'll be kind of a fall installation later this year, and we look forward to having it in Heroes Park. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 7A is also under the Arts Commission, so Hillary, you should have just stayed up there.
Steve had to talk. It's good. This is a budget amendment request for spending authority for revenues received by the Marine Arts Commission. We're requesting, the actual budget amendment amount shows $8,280, but that zeroes out because those are revenues received or promised in an agreement or with another sponsorship form that we already have in place. The intention of the use of those funds is to go towards covering expenses from the Dairy Days Art Show, MDC's traffic box wraps, which is an agreement that we've had in place for a long time for $5,000. Those agreements, you might have been seeing them on your agenda and consent agenda, so those are getting underway, and we'll be getting the artwork and wrapping those shortly. And then the residual expenses or the residual amount of this request is going towards Art Week to help grow that program. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Hillary, I assume the art show was a big success?
The Dairy Days Art Show?
Like, there was a ton of people, so I assume that the revenues coming in are a result of that being a successful endeavor?
The revenues coming in are from sponsorships and from applications for the booth fees.
Okay.
We haven't currently asked the artists to provide any donations for percentage of sales, although that's something that we've discussed and could ask for as the program continues to grow. But there was definitely a lot more attendance this year. I think the artists got really good exposure. We heard some of the artists that were there the year before that had made a lot of sales, didn't make a ton of sales, well, a few of them didn't make a ton of sales this year, but they talked to a lot of people and made a lot of good contacts, so they were still really happy with the show. And overall, I think the increased attendance from having this be the second year of the Dairy Days Art Show, it was really good, and a lot of the artists were happy to be a part of it, and I was really happy with how it all turned out. No travesties, so that's always good.
Thanks.
Do you have any comment? Any further? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Seeing how generous and here, I'll take the, I move that we approve the budget amendment for the Meridian Arts Commission for the amount not to exceed $8,280.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 7A. Any discussion from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7B is under Public Works Department.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm up here to give you a recap of Public Works Week and to let you know how it went. As you know, our 2017--
Missy, you want to pull that a little bit closer?
As you know, our 2017 national theme was Public Works connects us. We appreciate council's support and participation both this year and in years previous. Everyone contributes to Public Works Week in public works. The staff, this series of events doesn't happen by itself. It requires the efforts of many staff members to plan, and all staff members help execute it. This series of events is free to the public, is designed to educate the community about the things that Public Works Week does. This is our ninth annual Public Works Week, and our staff has it down to a science. This year, we had 13 public works partners who contributed financially. We had 19 public works partners who participated in some of the events, and we had 25 organizations that contributed prizes or in-kind donations. This resulted in $9,359 in donations to help cover the cost of hosting Public Works Week. We also plan annually for these events using our public works advertising promotional and public education budget. This year's budget was $5,000. That represents 1/10,000th of public works fiscal year 17 budget. This is our single largest outreach educational event series, and it gives us a huge bang for our buck. Again, the community response is outstanding. They love learning about what we do and the pride that we take in our city. So the poop scoop. We had a new starting location, and the route was well-received. The participants also liked having guides throughout the race. As you can see, we had at least six dogs join us in the race this year. In addition to our furry friends, we had 115 people register, 70 for the 5K and 45 for the 3K. For the food bank, we raised 268 pounds of food, and an additional $23.90 were collected at the registration for the food bank. That beat 2016, where we only collected 23 pounds of food. Some of our races return year after year, and we have proof. We've got the T-shirts from the past. In our Go with the Flow Tour, the bus was full. 100% of the people who returned the survey said the tour was excellent. We added a updated route this year. We included the always-popular Meridian Water Tower. We had a new state-of-the-art water treatment facility at well 27. They visited the upgraded South Black Cat lift station, and we finished at the ever-expanding wastewater resource recovery facility. And as you can see, this behind-the-scenes look at the city's infrastructure is always well-received by the attendees, and it earns the highest praise for the city and the staff. There is no stopping the expo. In spite of the weather and despite the rain, our cornerstone event in the City Hall Plaza went quite well. We had 15 partners and consultants who participated in the expo, in addition to the public works divisions. That's the largest number so far. The vendors commented that was a well-run event, and everyone was highly engaged. They were busy. We can tell because over 700 hot dogs were served and there was lots of popcorn. There is something for everyone at the expo. There are fun educational activities, opportunities for adults and kids as well. The top attractions this year, the big trucks, the wastewater displays, the environmental display, the water displays, and of course, the Home Depot birdhouses. Now, in case you missed anything, again, this year, we have a video thanks to Casey Emery, our city communications manager, and her intern, Alex. Let's go back, if you want to see the video. Let's go back, if you want to see the video.
Nice job.
Very nice.
So, while the primary benefits of Public Works Week are public education team-building and relationship-building, as you can see, Public Works connects us to the general public through Public Works Week. In addition, our sponsored donations benefit our community. Thanks to those sponsored donations, we're now also able to show support for local community needs. For the Parks Care to Share Scholarship Program, we have $507.88. For the Community Recycling Fund, we have $761.82. And for the Meridian Food Bank, before I announce the number, I'd like to invite the mayor, Dale Boldhouse, and Dan Clark to join us for a presentation. Do you want to do the honors?
No, I want to get warm. I'm crazy.
All right. For the Meridian Food Bank, we have $2,539.40.
Mayor, don't run off. We've got a little something special for you. Thank you, Dan.
Oh, no, that concern.
We just really appreciate the council and mayor's support of Public Works Week, and we noticed the mayor wasn't able to join us at the fun run this year, but we have an official, personally-made replica of this year's trophy for the mayor, in hopes that she will display it with honor in her office upstairs, along with many other treasured mementos of her tenure. So-
Only because I give you crap.
We have this year, if you haven't seen it, this was this year's Poop Scoop Run Trophy, hand-manufactured by our wastewater treatment folks with scrap metal, and so we wanted to present that to you. It is a running emoji.
That's why you call them runs.
The runs, and so we wanted to give you this as an honorary, this is the first year of this type trophy, so congratulations.
This has got to be the nicest-
It is. And we know that it'll find a treasured location upstairs in the mayor's office, so thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should.
Thank you, guys.
I'll tray her, cherish her.
And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Suzie?
Councilmember-
Thank you and all the staff for making us elected officials look good. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
That was a wonderful week. Your day out here was fantastic. We just can't thank you enough for what you do every day.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's, I actually started listening to her yesterday and got a comment and had an opportunity to chat about it, and every year, I think, get feedback from the public that was involved in one of the events or another, and always hear glowing reports. And certainly, they see what we see often, is the pride that is taken in the facilities and the way they can serve the city. So, thank you for, again, putting that human face on your activities. I will still maintain that we love, no news is good news in public work, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 7C is under our Fire Department. Hi, Charlie.
Madam Mayor, City Council.
Hi, Max.
Good afternoon. We are asking for a budget amendment in relation to the Fire Department to address some mold issues that we discovered back in May. I discovered, I was contacted by a captain at our fire station number five, he had some concern over some possible mold underneath some rubber mats in the workout room. I went and investigated, and upon investigation, it looked like he was correct, there was some mold underneath those mats. I contacted Max and his team to actually go do some testing. Some testing was performed, and the testing did result in there being mold underneath the mats in the workout room at that particular station. Been concerned about the other stations also having similar setups with rubber mats on the floors in their workout rooms. Subsequent testing was done in those stations and also discovered mold. At that time, I kind of turned it over to Max and let him and his team look into the costs associated with remediating that problem, and then also addressing that this not occur in the future, what methods can be done. So, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, the Fire Department found the mold issue out there on one of the fire stations, like what he said, and the building maintenance staff there was contacted there to come out and do an investigation out there. So, we came out there, we took a look at the one fire station, and sure enough, it was mold. So, we also contacted a mold investigation specialist, drove around to all the other fire stations as well, just to make sure if this was like an isolated area, or if it was happening throughout all the fire stations. Every fire station in the exercise room does have mold underneath the mats there, so it's a consistent issue. So, after we found that out, we had the mold investigation specialist take the samples. Those lab results did come back as positive mold, so every room was sealed up to prevent the cross-contamination. And at that point, we contacted vendors there to get values and prices there for the remediation work and to address the issues that was happening there at every station. So, onboard, we got a mold investigation specialist for additional testing and investigations, the mold remediation work, which would be the room cleaning, removing the carpets, and also the equipment, because equipment's got to be sterilized as well. Mold remediation work for the HVAC and duct work, because the pores may be in ductwork themselves also, so they need to be cleaned out. The RTU, the rooftop units, need to be cleaned out as well, just to make sure we're not spreading that throughout the building. Then on top that, we need to go back and apply sealant on the concrete floor to make sure that the floor is not going to be waiving any more moisture from the ground, creating the mold. So, we've got to agitate the top of the concrete floor and then add two layers of sealant also to make sure that no more moisture comes up through the floor. And then on top that, to reinstall the mats for the rooms.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Max, right in this dumb brain. We had, what we had was the concrete floor, right?
Right.
And did we have a rug on it?
Yes.
Or did we just have the mats?
There were both conditions there.
And were the mats ventilated, or were they solid mats?
Solid mats.
It is just contained to the workout room, and it could be, well, it could get in the ducts and stuff, which we hope hasn't-
Correct. So, that's part of the investigation work he's going to go through and make sure that it's nowhere out of, not out of the facility, but the only concrete floor in each of these facilities is only at the exercise room. Everywhere else, it's crawl space, so we don't have that issue anywhere else. It's just isolated to the exercise rooms.
It's just between the body heat and the mat and every, and the concrete down there just made moisture underneath.
Correct. Also, part of that also has to deal with a vapor barrier, a poly underneath that concrete slab when it was constructed would also eliminate this, or potentially eliminate the issue. It would stop that moisture before it actually came through the concrete floor, so, of course, it's more expensive to treat it after it's at this point.
So, Max, aren't those matte pieces? I know when we went through on our tour, one of the pieces was out with the mold specialists looking in it, and so those are pieces, not one solid mat.
Right, they kind of finger-joint it together.
Right, and he also said, you know, part of the cause could be how you clean it with the mopping and the water seeping down, and so it can't all create the kind of mold they apparently have with moisture out of the concrete.
Right. My, I contacted a architect also for investigation work also, to double-check my thoughts as well. His suggestions was the same as mine, as far as the vapor barrier should probably have been placed underneath that concrete. I don't believe that the mopping operations from the vendor, from the janitorial vendor, is actually creating the issue.
Other questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
There's a question for Charlie. Sounds like it's a pretty extensive process. What's this going to do to disrupt operations at each of these stations while this mitigation is going on?
Madam Council. Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavner, it is in the workout room, so I think that during the hours that they would be doing the mitigation process, that daily operations shouldn't be affected in any form or fashion. They currently have taken all of the workout equipment out of those rooms that have been affected. The workout equipment was treated and cleaned, if you will, to make sure there were no mold spores on that, and then it was moved out into the apparatus bays. So, the crews have still actually been able to perform their workouts and still maintain, you know, that area of readiness for their daily activities. So, I don't, I really don't see this process as it moves forward having any effect on operational readiness or operational efficiency.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Maybe one more question then for Max. As someone who recently went through a mold issue in my home, I learned very quickly that different mold investigation specialists vary in terms of quality and cost. Do we get multiple bids to get this situation handled? Or are we relying on the response from one vendor?
Councilman Kavner, we did contact one vendor. We did want to take care of this issue as soon as possible. We did contact a vendor there that we had, had them previously do work here at City Hall also, so we had a relationship with them. So, to speed up the process, we contacted that one individual that had to come out to do that work for us.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe things have changed with regard to mold. Is all mold bad mold now? Or, I mean, you mentioned you found mold, and then we hired somebody to scientifically determine that it was, in fact, mold, but I kept waiting for the word like toxic or something, or is just all mold devastating to health and has to be removed with very expensive beans anymore?
There are certain levels of mold, so from test results that he came back with, they are to the level where the restoration work needs to be done. There's one fire station there that's in question, so we'd like to go back and do some more testing there as well to fully determine if the restoration work does need to be done there, but from the preliminary examples or the testing, it's borderline right now.
So, we didn't try and get additional pricing from others, so we didn't get a second opinion. This has gone on long enough. We could have gone to see if there was a second opinion and someone that took a look at what remediation was necessary.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we could have done that at this point here. This was a health issue where we wanted to get it addressed as soon as possible and move forward with fixing the issue. So, these numbers are only a budgetary number. It doesn't necessarily mean that we need to go with these vendors, but it's a starting point so that we can move forward with it.
This is essentially your worst-case scenario?
Correct.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
The fire lease, and I did sign this budget amendment. The questions, though, that I had, I still have. I wish we would have taken advantage from the time that I signed this amendment today to get us additional quotes, but, you know, hearing that, what I'm hoping is that after, if this passes, that you'll work with multiple vendors to make sure that we're getting the most accurate pricing before we move forward. But that said, I would move that we approve the budget amendment for mold remediation for the fire stations for a not-to-exceed amount of $69,432.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
All ayes, wish carried. Item 7D is under our Police Department, and I'll turn this over to the chief.
Madam Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Over the last couple of weeks, I have talked about the SRO contract, and the SRO contract for 2017, 2018 is before us today. It's been signed by the school district, and I am requesting- It's been signed by the school district, and I am requesting permission to have the mayor sign it as well. And the highlights of changes is you will see a reduction from 10.5 SROs to the 10 SROs, removing the SRO that was assigned to the school district office in partnership with ISU, as I mentioned earlier in council presentations. And then just for the record, the revenue that was generated by the SRO contract in 2016, 2017 was $323,438. And the contract in front of you for 2017, 2018 revenue is at $423,516, which is an increase of just over $100,000. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for the chief?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Chief, I remember reading an article in one of the newspapers about there being some concern with the school district and their contract with us. I assume all those issues are resolved and everybody's back on equal footing and happy to move forward?
Yeah, Councilman Bird, Councilman Cavanagh. The only issue was is that the Board of Trustees had some questions of the school administration that they did not have the answers for that night. And so that's why they postponed it. And then I personally met with both the superintendent and assistant superintendent, and that's what they told to me. And so I don't believe there's any concerns. In fact, we got a $100,000 increase. So obviously, they budgeted appropriately, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept this budget amendment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
I'd move that we approve the West Dade School District Resource Officer Agreement.
Second.
We've had a motion, a second, any discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Next item is Clerk's office.
Mr. Bird, actually, I will, I'll go ahead and reduce that. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The Idaho State Police in issuing liquor licenses pursuant to the Idaho Code require that any establishment that would like a beer, wine, or liquor license that's within 300 feet of a church or a school needs specific approval from the governing board, which is the city council. They instituted a process a year ago that asked that they essentially get a preliminary approval from the council before they will process the request for a beer, wine, or liquor license. This council in November approved that for Frankie's Java that was in the location there, Generations Plaza, it's within 300 feet of the Harvest Church. Frankie's Java is now gone. Déjà Brou La Fille Latte is in that space and would like to apply for a beer and wine license. And so the state police again notified them that they would need at least contingent approval from this council before they would process their beer and wine license. And so we're bringing that before you. If you approve it, as you had previously, I just send them a letter acknowledging that you've reviewed it and you've tentatively approved it, but it would then come back to you again for final approval, or excuse me, come back, yeah, come back in front of you for final approval after it's been processed by the state and the county. Any questions?
Council, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we approve the contingent approval for the beer and wine license for Hard Rock LLC Déjà Brou La Fille Latte.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second, any discussion? Here none, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
All eyes. The next item, item 7S, is F, is a policy for your consideration on the use of drones. I don't know if, Bill?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As pursuant to our policy on how we establish policies for the city, these begin at the department level. They've, this particular policy has been taken to the directors for comment and feedback and input, and now that's therefore in front of you. We have discussed this at length. Basically, the purpose of this policy, we wanted to line up with using this new piece of equipment that's different for folks. We wanted to make sure that we had policy in place for the city employees to be using this device. We haven't purchased it yet. Would match up with what the legal world allows at this time, which is very, very new. There'll probably be a lot of both Idaho, in Idaho legislature as well as nationally, there'll probably be cases. We wanted to make sure in creating this policy that we had a starting point for employees using this particular device on behalf of the city. And then if the public had a concern or a question, we could then point back to the policy and show that we had created these rules for our own employees to follow in relation to using this device. Right now, there's only one person in the city that would be authorized under this currently because she has that FAA license. The whole intent here really is to, again, put these rules in place, then make the purchase afterwards if that's satisfactory. The only thing that's changed from the one in your packet is item two says employees must obtain a remote pilot certification from the FAA prior to operating a drone. The feedback we received was it sounded as if that applied to everything, and of course, this is a policy, so it doesn't apply to anybody but ourselves. But we changed the language to include operating a city-owned or approved-use drone. So that way it's clear. Again, these are only for a city equipment. If you look down in the same policy that's in your packet, number seven says employees may not use personally-owned drones for the city's purpose unless we specifically request it or we specifically approve it. Now, again, that doesn't mean if somebody, a person in the public gets footage or material that we could use, that could comply with our policy on how it could be used under the code, that we couldn't accept it. Because they didn't operate it for us, they didn't, they didn't use it at our request. But we wanted to make sure that if there was a need sometime, maybe in an emergency or something else. But anyway, it's been vetted through the directors. We think it's, we think it's sound. We think it matches up with the Idaho Code currently. Ms. Kane from my office has done extensive research, probably knows more about drones than she ever thought she would need to or want to. But I think it's ready to move forward if you're comfortable with it. If there's concerns or questions and things, that's the purpose of today. If it's okay, once we get to final form, then we will bring it back in a resolution form so that it can be approved and added to our handbook.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I only have one question, I think, and it's item number six. And it's the line, "Employees may use drone-collected information for only a specifically authorized purpose." I own a drone. I've got my little drone card with the FAA. I've used it to shoot some amazing footage of our great state. So I'm supportive of drones, but I also recognize the public's concern about them. And if I were a citizen and I was reading specifically authorized purpose, I would want to know what that means. Hoping I can get some clarity on that piece.
Well, again, part of that's, you know, there's still a development, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Cavanagh. Part of it's still in the development of what specific uses we could do. There are, there are police issues that are completely separate from this, and that's not what this is meant to address. There will be, obviously, some guidelines on how or when we're going to use it, since currently we only have one person that can use that. Would part of your concern be that the term a drone may mean more than that, like the number two that we changed it? Would you prefer me to insert that wording as well? And again, authorized use is going to be, again, that the city can define as to what our purposes are, and that's still a part of the process of development. I mean, overall, it's going to be used for promoting the city, marketing the city, using it to show activities and things like that. But those haven't been defined, and we didn't really want to insert those types of things because, obviously, those change over time, or the methods of how it's used over time change. So I think those are things that, you know, if there's a concern or desire, we can certainly bring it back as a workshop discussion item. How is that working? What have you been using it for? What's the idea behind it? Those kinds of things, as we get that kind of more established. Right now, we want to get the rules in place upfront on how it can be used and what's the authority or authorization process to use that. And then we'll get to the finer details of the specific terms or the specific uses per department. Most departments aren't going to use it. I guarantee you, we'll never fly a drone for the legal department. Can't see any reason we'd ever do that. But, but it's a fair question. I think we definitely have to be able to respond to that to the public as well.
Madam Mayor.
I guess to try and answer Mr. Neri's question, I think that my, my only change, or I guess request, is that we are, we are identifying what the specific use is. And, you know, I heard you talk about community events, marketing activities. I know that our Public Information Officer, I think, is the one that has this license, and I think those are great. And I can, I can completely understand the, you know, apprehension of specifically listing things that are in here and that, knowing that that may change. Being aware, I think, of the public's concern, rightly or wrongly, about unmanned vehicles with cameras in them, that we should be identifying what the city's intention is outside of law enforcement, what our use is going to be.
Any other questions or comments? I think we did look at other drone policies to get a better idea of what to consider in this. Any, any comments on that?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, and I apologize, Casey had to go home sick today, so she couldn't be here for this presentation. But yes, there has been a lot of work done, and in fact, National League of Cities has some cities that they even reference other people's to when looking at what type of information is out there. So there have been preliminary discussions with departments about what that would look like. Some departments, at this point in time, don't, I'll use fire as an example, you know, there are ways of fire departments using drones, but this time, our fire department doesn't see a use for those, for the drones, depending upon what type of drone is purchased. You know, they have different camera capabilities, which could lead to other opportunities, but those would be things that we'd be continuing to work with the departments on from that perspective. But your primary have been talking about marketing, maybe some things with community development. They might go out and do some site inspections using drones, or same with Public Works could be doing some of that for some of their purposes, if they have to do mapping. A variety of uses, I think, from the standpoint of really maybe, maybe to get to some of these issues on the issue of events. You know, if you're at an event and you're flying high enough to not be personally identifiable, which is really, you know, the Idaho State Code issue from that standpoint. Of course, if you're in a, you can't be over someone else's backyard and doing stuff from that standpoint. I don't even think the police rules would allow that to occur from that standpoint. So most of the things are pretty excluded under state law from what you can do from that standpoint.
Madam Mayor, I could also add, I mean, there's a real flux in the law, because this is a new thing. And so, again, it's not that I don't want to answer the Councilman Cavanagh's question. I don't know specifically what we would use it for on a very particular basis. But look at the example of the video you watched today of the Plaza event for Public Works Week. That was taken with a camera. Nothing in the code prevents that. You can stand in front of somebody and take their picture in a public place. You can stand on the roof of this building and take a picture with a camera. No rules apply to that at all. If that camera was attached to a drone, rules apply. So we have to kind of navigate through that to make sure we're meeting the code requirements like Robert just said, as well as assuring the public, again, we're not using this device for things that would give them a discomfort, even if it's legally allowed. And so we do want to make sure that we're very clear on internally what the purpose of these are, but understand this very weird situation that the code hasn't really caught up to the technology or this type of equipment yet, and we're still trying to evolve through that, but yet we still see the value that this can add to the city.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I really applaud that we're doing this. I think this is something that's really unique for Meridian. I think that it will allow us to better tell our story at a local and national level. Likewise, I'm just fairly aware that the public has some general apprehension about government entities using unmanned air vehicles to take photos. And if, if we can't say what our specific use is going to be to the public, that, I know that our intentions are well, and I know what the intention of Casey is to use this for, because I know Casey, and I've heard the conversations. But John or Jane Q, Meridian citizen, who's going to read about this or hear about this in the news, is going to say, what's the city of Meridian doing with a drone? And we don't have necessarily a specific use that we're talking about. And if I was a citizen, that would cause me concern.
I think that that very question is the reason that the policy is in front of you today. When a neighboring city got theirs, and many of the agencies we've talked to, they haven't had a policy in place. And we thought that this would give some additional comfort instead of, and saying that it was well thought out and, and that it's good to show the responsibility to them.
And Madam Mayor, I think at this point in time, marketing, marketing is the primary, primary purpose, taking video of events, you know, because, you know, aerial, aerial footage is something that a lot of people are using in marketing-type stuff. And that is what we are doing. You know, we already have someone under, in the mayor's office who's taking video professionally for us outside of this, but this will allow us to do that instead of hiring outside people to do the marketing purposes. It requires you to have engagement with the people that you're shooting over other people's property already, and that's something that we do from that standpoint. There are a lot of rules and regulations from the FAA and everybody else about what you can and can't do. But marketing is the primary purpose at this point in time, because the mayor's office is the only ones doing this. As other departments determine whether or not they want to have a staff member trained, take the test to do this, they'll have to help determine exactly what that would be for at that point in time. They may be able to come to Casey in the meantime and ask for something, but for specific, outside of the marketing purposes, I think those are, those would be conversations that would be held as time allows.
And those will be director-level conversations?
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Then I would own, I guess I would suggest then that we change specifically authorized to marketing purposes. Be my only requested change.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my only comment back from that perspective is if there's intention at the council, every time a department wants to use it for any specific purposes beyond that, that comes back to council, that's putting it in the ordinance to that effect. That has a high cost to make those changes. I don't know if it's necessary from the standpoint of, what if it is not just specific for marketing? What if Steve wants to go fly it up on the property of the 770 acres? Is that required to come back to council to change the ordinance to allow him to go out and fly on the city-owned property?
Madam Mayor, I guess I would respond that what I heard today is that marketing is the need, and I've also heard that this is a policy that's developing because it's a new technology. Perhaps by the time that there is an additional use that the city would want to do, that policy nationally would be more thought out and those questions answered, and that could be brought back to council.
Madam Mayor, Madam Members of the council, so I guess the only thing I would suggest, if you recall, when we, when we created the policy for social media, and I would liken this a very similar thing. Social media was fairly new. How it was being used by government was fairly new. So we created a policy that said, if you want to use social media for the city, here's how you do it, which is kind of what this policy is. We didn't say in that policy, we're going to use Twitter, or we're going to use MySpace, or we're going to use AOL, or anything, because we didn't know what we'd be doing. We knew that we would develop that as, as part of, as our business of what we need to do. But we didn't put it in the policy for a specific reason, and that was the reason we didn't put it into this policy. We did the same thing with police body worn cameras. We created a policy on how it's used, but when we turn it off, when we turn it on, where do we point it, who do we, where do we share it, how do we do that? All of that's procedural, isn't in the policy. So that was our reasoning, was that we will develop those things. At the moment, it is marketing, is the primary purpose of what the reason, the conversation we're having. If you want us to bring it back every time, that's fine. It's, it can get clunky, and, but if that's your desire, that's certainly your call. But that's the reason, is many of those procedures are going to be done internally. There's certainly nothing to hide. There's certainly nothing to hide, and we're certainly going to come and talk about it anytime you want to talk about it. But you add it in the policy, you're going to, you may end up changing the policy a number of times for every iteration that people come up with.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Outside of the police department, I can't think of anything the city would want to use a drone for that wasn't marketing. You going out and going over the 77-acre park, that's for marketing. I just don't see why that, outside of the police department, and they have their own rules and stuff like that. So I don't see anything wrong with the way it's written myself.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, counsel, just from that standpoint, one of the things we learned through this process is, a drone with the camera they have, they can go up and they can show you the water content of a park. So they can show you, so there are other uses that you could see. Again, talking about the fire departments, larger cities are using drones to go out and they pre-deploy it ahead of the trucks to position at the location of a fire, so the people on, they're driving there are gathering information. We're not there yet, technology's not there, Idaho's not there. But just so you know, these are the type of advanced uses that some cities can use in the future, where obviously fire department doesn't see a use right now because it's time-intensive, it's financial, you know, this technology, there's a lot of other things. But just want to make you aware, there are future uses that we will likely see coming forward that we are not even thinking about today.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
And I think, Robert, that's when something like that, as they develop and get more used and other things, that's when you come back. But right now, we're using it for marketing only. Decide what the police might use it for.
If and when they decide to use it.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
In regard to parks, hate to put Steve on the spot, but can you think of anything that, my first thought is, when you were checking for water damage with the flood with the most northern property.
Was this on? Here we go, okay. Mapping would be maybe the 77-acre type use that Robert was mentioning, if we wanted to fly over a property that we own to do some mapping work. Mapping, marketing's certainly the primary one, thinking specifically of events. The idea of the moisture content, things like that, is a technology that's out there. I'm not sure if it would come specifically with the drone that would be purchased, but I know those capabilities are out there. Those are the kinds of things that I would see us using it for, yeah. So marketing, mapping, moisture.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, I'd say come back with a list of things that you could think you might, in the relatively near future, want to use it for, and then we just put it in from the beginning, and then if something else comes up, come back. That way you've got a pretty good list going, so if somebody asks you, asks us why we're using drones, say, here's our policy, here's the lot of uses. If we think of something else, we might change it.
Anyway, you do have a policy in front of you, and I guess recommended language, could come back next week and have a follow-up discussion. Anything further from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 7G is under the mayor's office. Counsel, I think last fall, we came in front of you to change this because we anticipated a change in the labor laws that would impact this position. Much of this is kind of putting it back together again, because those labor laws did not, were not enacted, fortunately. So this is, this is cleaning that up, and I don't know if Mr. Neri has anything to add.
Just a little bit, I guess the disadvantage sometimes of being here forever is, I was involved with the original implementation of this ordinance back in 2004. So really, now all we've done is changed slightly some of the language based on the title of the position, the duties that have been reestablished in a different form, and so we've, and then aligned it with the current practices of the city that didn't really exist in the same way in 2004. So we're talking about how the compensation program is now included in here, because we already have a generalized compensation program, where we didn't have that such in 2004. So the intent was really just align the current title and duty of this position, which originally was the only position in the mayor's office back in 2004, to now line up with the one position that's performing this particular functions, and then being consistent with the rest of our code. So any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's really it. It's really a cleanup ordinance, in my opinion, so.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for Mr. Neri, was, is the authority piece for the city council that looks like to be stricken out, was that added a few months ago, and that we're now taking it back out? Does that?
That's an old one.
Yep. Yeah, Councilman Cavanagh, that was basically, the strikeouts are what was in the original ordinance that I don't think has been adjusted significantly since 2004. But that particular one, back in 2004, again, we had kind of a little bit different scenario, so that's why it was written that way. And again, we've changed a lot of things and duties and responsibilities over the last 12 years.
One more follow-up then, Madam Mayor. Were the strikeouts then stricken out in 2004, or those are proposed strikeouts before us today?
Those are proposed strikeouts today, based on what the current ordinance says.
Are there other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
One more then, just some clarity from either you, Madam Mayor, or Mr. Neri, about why we're striking out those particular pieces if they weren't part of the previous ordinance six months ago.
The, this is the current ordinance that's in our code. The current ordinance says, city council, and when we talked about it a few months ago, what we were concerned with is the position, based on the FLSA regulations, would have a different reporting structure and whether a different, a different method of basically being an hourly versus a salaried employee. This was written the way it was in 2004 to meet the FLSA requirements then. There was a discussion that those were going to change, and then we therefore need to change this. This position no longer has to be appointed, which is what it was, to have that status of being a salaried employee. So we're making this the same footing as other employees, but this particular one only has to report to the mayor to meet the FLSA requirements today to be a salaried employee. It doesn't have to be appointed. So that's the reason for the change.
Any other questions? Does council want to take action on this today, or think about it? What's your pleasure? Mr. Bird.
It would be my preference to have it come back next week with all the, with it wrote upright, with all the scratches and stuff in it.
Mr. Bird, you have to have them in it. It's required by the code. It's required by the code to be in this one.
You're right. We can enact on it then today if you want to. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
For the new council people that weren't here in 2004, the reason the, with the approval of the city council, and also with the consent of the city council was put in, was because we'd never had an administrative assistant before, and we didn't want stuff happening that we didn't like. It has worked out, and that person should be, their salary and stuff should be set like everybody else's. So I don't see, personally, I have no problem with it going out, and I was probably one of the biggest ones that wanted it in. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
With that, I move we approve the change, the amending of Title I, Chapter 6, Section 4 of the Meridian City Code.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
All ayes. 7H is continued from July 5th, Resolution 17-2018. So, council, any further questions or discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
There's no discussion. I move we adopt the amended City of Meridian Strategic Plan 2016 to 2020.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 17-2018. Is there any discussion? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Bird.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Thank you, council. Amended onto the agenda is Item 7I under our fire department, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Niemeyer, Chief Niemeyer, sorry.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. This is a follow-up from previous discussions regarding Station 6, the timing of, the staffing of, and as you know, the offer from the rural district. You have two documents in front of you. One is a multi-page document with a date of June 6th on the upper left-hand corner. This document was presented to council, to the mayor, during our joint meeting with the Rural Fire District Commissioners and the city council, the mayor, to discuss the timing, and also to discuss an offer by the rural district to pay for approximately 13 and a half months' worth of salary for the firefighters needed to hire for Station 6. Now, we also did a follow-up discussion at the first budget hearing about three weeks ago, if I remember correctly. After that discussion, the request was made of me to bring back in writing the formal offer for further discussion and then decision. At that time, during that budget hearing, we talked about timelines and the importance or significance of certain timelines. The timelines to get the folks into the academy if the decision is made to accept the rural offer is August 21st, meaning that's when the academy starts. This Friday, job offers are being made by the partners that participated in the joint testing process along, that will be participating in the joint academy. The reason this Friday's important, there's a few reasons that I do want to cover. It takes about 30 to 45 days to get new firefighters onboarded prior to the academy starting. The components of that include the fit-for-duty exam that they have to go down and meet with Dr. Hill, who's our contracted physician, to get their fit-for-duty exam completed. There's a criminal background check process that's required by the state EMS Bureau. That's done through ISP. That is taking right now anywhere from 30 to 45 days to complete because they're backlogged. In addition to that, we have the EMS state licensure reciprocity that needs to be started so that these folks can be licensed in the EMS world. And then it takes about 68 weeks to fit and then get in new turnouts for those firefighters that are going into the academy. So I did want to brief on that as far as timelines, why is this Friday or next Friday important? As far as trying to come up with a decision, that's the reason why, is the onboarding that needs to take place prior to them starting the academy. The other thing, and I think Todd is here, good, there is certainly a timeline for Todd in a decision, because a budget amendment would have to be done. It's essentially for this year, a zero-cost amendment. The city is basically saying, we are willing to expend the funds from August 21st to September 30th, and we're also willing to receive the funds from the rural district in the same amount. So there's a budget amendment process there that needs to take place, and certainly the expert is here to answer any questions on that. So with that in front of you, the district board met last night. Councilman Cavanagh was present as the department liaison. You have in front of you the written offer pursuant to that request at the budget meeting, that the district is offering to pay for the cost, both personnel benefits and startup operational costs for the 12 firefighters, in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million, that would begin on August 21st, 2017, and end on September 30th, 2018. So with that, I would stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Mark, we hired, get these guys on starting the academy the 21st. When will they be done and ready to go online?
So the academy, Councilman Bird, is running four months, and then they have a three-month FTO period. It's called Field Training Officer, where they finish out the task book to confirm the academy competencies. So you're looking at about seven months, and then they're online available to cover shifts.
Okay. Station 6, which I agree we need, when is the plan start and finish of it?
So that is tentative, but I can give you a general, we would like to see completion in the fall of 2018. The first step is to get the architectural design work done. We're working with Keith Watts on the RFQ for that. I just attended a meeting, prior to this council meeting, with Public Works. They're looking, as you know, at a well modification in Bear Creek Park. So there was a meeting talking about design, et cetera, of what's going on there. We are going to have the architect work up two different designs, one in the location on the corner of Bear Creek, and one in the current location of the grass lot. I think I just answered a question, that's good. So that we can then take that out to the community and get them involved as well. We did present to the Parks and Rec Commission. They're definitely in favor of what we are proposing. We've been working very closely with parks, so the next step in that is to get the architectural design work done. Somebody asked me today, when would you like that done? And I said, yesterday. We want to get that done as quickly as we can so we can move forward.
So Mark, what you're telling me is, we will probably have an extra 12 firefighters for five stations for about five months?
Correct, five to six months. Yes, sir.
I won't be here, but I hope you don't have any overtime.
I hope I don't either.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for Mr. Lavoy. The letter we received from the fire district indicates that the funds are being offered, I guess, to the city, and the word, the quote is, "In the effort to build and staff Fire Station 6 by fall of 2018." Maybe this is a question for legal, I'm not quite sure. So I've been very vocal in my support of Station 6, but that's obviously a discussion that needs to go through our budget hearing and the budget process. And my concern is, by accepting this, where the language is, the money's being made for us to build and staff a Station 6, that we've yet to agree to do as part of the budget process, are we, are we out of bounds in moving forward? That's my only concern, is are we not acting appropriately?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, the budget process does allow you to perform this request through the budget amendment process, and that's the avenue that we've taken. We will go through the formal budget process, which occurs in the month of August, which is our official amendment and final announcement to the citizens for the fiscal year 2017 budget. So you are following the processes that are allowed to you as a city and a councilman.
Great.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Bird.
Todd, am I not right, fiscal year 18, Station 6 nor the manning of Station 6 will cost the city nothing. So it will not even be in our budget.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, from a budgetary standpoint, we must budget dollars. We must appropriate funds for the right and ability for the city to make payroll, to make expenses.
I understand that.
So we do have an appropriation policy we must follow.
But it don't come out of our taxpayer dollars for 18. It's being paid by the Rural Fire District, the whole, the building and the employees.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, the payments will come from the city to make payments to the, to the officers that we have.
Money in, money out.
We will be receiving a reimbursement. We will be receiving a reimbursement from the Rural District to reimburse us, but the city will be obligated to make the payment initially.
Yes, but this rural, it's no different it is now. The rural pays us, then we pay. We pay and then they pay us.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Bird, yes, at the end of the day, we will net that effect of zero.
Councilman Bird, I can add on to that. You've been a part of those Rural District budgets for quite a while. As they went and through their budget process last night, certainly Councilman Cavanagh can chime in. He was there. They've articulated a special line in their budget for this agreement as far as wages. In addition to the eleven percent they will be contributing to the city under the joint powers agreement, if you will, or the agreement with the district. Just a note on the funding for the station, Councilman Bird, the city has been collecting impact fees that are eligible to build the station. So the station cost will be impact fee as well as the fire engine to go into it. The personnel cost will be paid for by the district in the first thirteen and a half months, essentially.
But we, and we will pay back the the station costs. We will pay for it like we have on the rest, paying back for the station cost.
In this particular case, the city won't be reimbursing the district for the station cost. The city will actually be paying right out of their impact fees for the cost of the station. When we built Station Five and Station Four, we didn't have that mechanism in the city to collect impact fees and then pay for the fire station bill.
But that's still coming out of our budget, out of our.
Out of the impact fee balance, yes, sir.
And Chief, don't go to the Finance Department to print your papers anymore.
Todd's had an influence on me. What can I say?
Especially when I forget my glasses.
Madam Mayor?
You need a different font. Do we need to get you a software update?
We've got so many spreadsheets for Todd. We just get used to it, I guess.
Mr. Borton?
Madam Mayor, Todd, do we, does the July nineteenth budget need to include the expenditure of the impact fees for construction in the next fiscal year?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, the budget amendment for the nineteenth must address the compensation, the wages, the benefits, as described in the contract that we make. Now, whether or not we want to construct and start the design of the building in fiscal seventeen, the answer would be yes to your question. If the answer is no, not until fiscal eighteen, you can do a budget amendment in eighteen, or we can add an enhancement item to your process next week. But it's all going to be based on when do you want to start spending your first dollar for the design and construction of Station Number Six. So that's a decision we'll have to decide on, and we can get that added to next week's agenda accordingly.
Madam Mayor?
Chief, is it your recommendation that the construction process start immediately?
It'd be my recommendation that the design process certainly start immediately. We're going to have some legwork to do on the, with the, with the community out there. We all always hold public hearings and then go out and do the, I'm not using the right word, town halls, or come and visit and take a look and give us your input and feedback. So certainly the, sorry, the design process in seventeen, absolutely.
And Madam Mayor, by design process, meaning the expenditure of funds in this fiscal year?
Correct, using impact fees.
In which case, that would come back. That'd be adjusted for July nineteenth. The second question is the, the capturing the labor costs in year two after the twelve firefighters are added is incorporated into your CFP. Is that correct? Your Consolidated Financial Plan accounts for that?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, can you repeat that again?
Increased cost, I mean, this is the, the challenge that we have is once the first year is covered and you've got one point four million and change to capture in subsequent years, absent a great tool like a consolidated financial plan, that might be a challenge to anticipate. But it's incorporated into your plan, I take it.
Madam Mayor, Madam, sorry. Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, the Station Six was planned and programmed into the CFP for the City of Meridian.
And Madam Mayor, in year two is appropriately slotted if twenty eighteen fiscal year is year one, where rural is paying, twenty nineteen, your CFP accounts for capturing those costs?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes, we had the full expenditures occurring for the city to start in twenty nineteen.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Cavanagh?
I guess we should, I guess I need some clarification on the action we need to take. We need to accept the offer formally from the Rural Fire?
Yes, sir.
Right. Madam Mayor, then I move that we accept the offer from the Meridian Rural Fire Protection District for an amount of one point five million dollars to cover the startup and operational costs for up to twelve firefighters to begin on August 21st, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bird?
Also, within that motion, does it not conclude on September 30th, 2018?
Madam Mayor, you're correct. Yes, I agree, from August 21st, 2017 to September 30th, 2018.
Thank you.
Second, agreed.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Just a comment, and I just, I think it's important we put on the record how much we appreciate the rural coming to us with this offer. I think it allows us to accomplish a much-needed upgrade in South Meridian. So thanks to them.
And that will be relayed.
Councilman Cavanagh, I'll certainly relay that, and I think they equally appreciate the partnership that they've had with the city. This station is not only going to serve the City of Meridian residents, but the residents in the Rural District, South of Eighty-four, so I know their appreciation is definitely valid.
Counsel, I think it would be appropriate to, we'll draft a letter for your signatures next week, accepting their offer and expressing our things. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bird?
No.
The majority has it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bird?
Chief, to your earlier, or your earlier comments about getting the design going this fiscal year, and it might show up on July nineteenth as a, I don't know if you were able to come up with a, none of us have built, other than Councilman Bird and the mayor, have been involved in the construction of the new station, so kind of rolling out that plan and understanding the timeline. I don't know if July nineteenth is too soon, but.
We, we, we'll get to work tomorrow morning. As you know, this will be the first fire station built under my watch as well, so luckily, there are people in the city that have been a part of this in the past that are going to help walk us through it and we're going to do the right thing, learn together, and get that hopefully definitely by the nineteenth.
Madam Mayor?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bird?
Mark, I would advise that you guys sit down and get all the plans of the existing five and look through and see what's, talk to your captains and your guys and see what works and what don't.
Absolutely.
We had the help of NAPA when we built the first one over there, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely have the guys involved. They live in those twenty-four hours a day, so their input is very valuable.
They need to have some input.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Item seven J is under our Police Department. And, and council, we apologize for the late addition of this. This, this just is a recent opportunity that we felt needed a budget amendment because of the deadlines. Chief?
Madam Mayor, council, thank you for your time today. I thought it was just so we could compete with the Fire Department and have a budget amendment that was added at the last moment as well.
That's one thing you don't need to compete for.
Yeah. So, Madam Mayor, council, I apologize for coming in front of you today for this. As you know, in the past, I've always come in front of you with a net neutral budget amendment. And today, just to get elephant in the room answered right away, I'm asking for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, not to exceed them out. But let me explain why I'm here today. On July seventh, which was just last Thursday, we were offered an opportunity to showcase the Meridian Police Department as well as the City of Meridian. We were approached by a international broadcasting company that partnerships with the International Chiefs of Police Association. They're in their ninth year of, of a partnership. And they produce what they call is IACP.net. And what they do is they do short films that highlight different areas of police departments and the innovation and the great things that they do. Oftentimes, it's federal agencies and very large police departments. We've been invited to participate because we attracted their attention based upon us being a values-based organization, our positive culture, our youth interaction, our youth programs, our community support and relations, and our recruitment retention. And that in itself is quite the honor. And they want to offer us a slot. There are sixteen slots. Eight of them are going to the federal government, eight of them are going to local law enforcement agencies. And so I need an answer right away whether this would be something that we would be interested in or not. We fully believe that it's important to us. It would be nice to do. We would have full copyright ownership of all of the data that is produced, all the raw material, all of the final footage, full say on what it says, and full change rights. And this was brought in front of both the mayor and our communications manager, Casey Emery, to see what she thought of the process, and she said that it's a really good deal. But it is, it is a cost. Now, what do we get with that cost? That will cover everything. That will cover all the filming. That will cover all the editing. That will cover all of the executive producer time. That will cover all the equipment purchased. They'll film onsite here in Meridian, so it will be our community that's highlighted. They'll film various stakeholders in the community. They'll film various stakeholders within the Police Department. And they'll produce a short film. Now, that short film will be ours. We own it. We can do whatever we want with it. We can highlight it on any social media that we have forever, including that raw data as well. But what they'll also do with it is highlight it at the international conference that will be held in Philadelphia this year in October. They show it on all the movie screens within the conference. They show it in every hotel TV, in every hotel room of conference attendees. Last year's conference attracted about seventeen thousand five hundred people across the globe. They'll also publish it on the IACP Government Network for at least a year afterwards. So it's quite the exposure highlight in our community and our department. We consider it to be an honor. Of course, there is the cost, and that cost is twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So I can answer any questions that you have at this time, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Madam Mayor?
I guess, Chief, the one thing that was key is that we'll be looking for officers and using this as a recruitment tool is, is a nice addition. Having the exposure at that level and being able to recruit for our, our police openings as retirements happen, as positions become open is something that you just can't pay for. So that was part of the discussion as well.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bird?
Chief, do we own the film?
Yes, sir. We'll have, we'll own the copyright. We can do whatever we want with it for as long.
I missed it. You said it. I'm sorry. I think it's a great plan.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh?
Chief, what is the short film? I guess I'm.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, it is going to be various interviews and various filming of, of department members and community members highlighting those areas that we talked about. Why does our value-based organization work? Why do we have a positive culture in the Police Department? Why do people want to come work here? Why are we successful in our recruiting and retention and highlighting our youth interaction that we do, our SROs, the good work that they do in the schools? It's really just to showcase us as a model organization.
It's five minutes?
It's five minutes. Yeah, if that was part of your question, it's, the end product will be five minutes.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Is there an example from another municipality that we could see?
Absolutely. I have, what I will do is I will turn over the proposal to the city clerk who can send it out to council members that has some links. That's, I would suggest that you look at the links and look at the quality of work that they do produce. They do some amazing things. So I will get that out to you as soon as I'm done presenting.
The chief and his team have not only seen it when they've been at the conference, but they went on and took a look at the links that they have provided. And so has Casey. Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Bird?
CNN, Genesee, sitting here, and no more questions. I move we approve the budget amendment for the leadership film series not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I'm sorry. No way without having a chance to learn more, look over examples, and see what this is.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Cavanagh?
I have to, I have to agree. I mean, this is a last-minute addition for a five-minute video that we've not been able to see examples. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not in favor of even voting on this today. If time is of the essence and we need to make a decision now, then my recommendation would be that we don't do this right now. If we are able to have a week to review an example, continue this item to next week, that would be more my preference. I don't know where the rest of the council is.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Little Roberts?
Excuse me, can we play one right now?
Support that?
It's just of the essence.
Madam Mayor, council, actually, I have all night, so we can do whatever you all want. We can play it right now. I will tell you this is the timeline. I have a phone conference from London on Thursday at eight AM that I have to give a, we're good to go or we're not good to go. It's not to say that we wouldn't be able to go back and change our mind in a week for now, but that slot may be gone. So we are having a phone conference on Thursday with a direction that we'd like to go.
And the other piece to that is, as our finance team is trying to wrap up for publication, the amended budget for this year, we have already exceeded the deadline, and, and so that is why we put them on the, the agenda today.
Call for the question.
Okay, well, Mr. Bird has called for the question. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
No.
Councilmember Bird?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, it takes some time. I know it's, if it's presented on the seventh and they expect you to answer in a matter of days with no background, that's not fair to you either. Maybe a wonderful opportunity, but, but I think looking at whatever you're providing, reviewing the links, I've never heard any discussion about there being a need for this type of resource that we would spend money on to anybody, any, you know, making a twenty thousand dollar informational video, which may be very valuable, so that's why I'm hesitant to act so quick. If they give us, for whatever reason, five days to make a decision, if on your conference call, if this were to be tabled until next week, and you're able to represent that it's been presented to the elected officials and they'll be deciding on the eighteenth, and if they say, "Too late," you're gone. Then too late. That's just not enough time for me.
Madam Mayor, council, I, I just need to know if it was even a waste of our time to, to, to go forward, to know what to tell them on Thursday. So if there was going to be no, if there's an absolutely no, then on Thursday, I need to say, to say, "We're out." Now, if I, they understand budgeting and they, I mean, I have all sorts of, I have enhancement here as well. I mean, we can talk about funding however we want to talk about funding. It's just, it's something, the project is going to be completed before October, so it doesn't make any sense to then pay for it in FY '18.
I guess, Todd, is it something, can we take action on it next week? Does that give you enough time to put your numbers together?
Madam Mayor, the answer is yes. Next week, we can accept our very last amendment. We will be promoting to you the fire department amendment for Station 6. So if we wanted to do one final place one, we do have next week, but next Tuesday is the final date that we can accept amendments because the following week, the city does propose the final budget to the citizens for fiscal year '17.
So, Chief, I heard interest, but from council that wants to see products and look at this a little bit further, so perhaps you can share with them that there was, there is interest and they wanted to have a chance to look at the videos. And they will be voting on it next Tuesday.
Madam Mayor, council, that's what I thought it was going to do anyways, because I was really quite amazed that it got put on the agenda today. It was happening just a little too quickly for me as well, and it required us to go back and do a lot of paperwork. My thought was to make that proposal to council tonight to see if there was any interest, because if there wasn't, then we just need, it's a moot point, we just need to stop. If there was some sort of interest, then I would come back next week for the formal budget or the amendment approval was my plan, because Todd did tell me I had one more week. So I would...
He's being generous.
What's, yeah, he's glaring at me over my shoulder, I can see that. I guess I would suggest that the clerk send out those links to council and have them have an opportunity to review those, and then I'll just come back before you next week. Plus, that would give me a chance to meet with my liaison, because she is out of town and she has no clue that we're doing this either, so in fairness to her, that would be a good thing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Our very resourceful clerk has managed to pull up one, if we would like to view it now.
All that beautiful...
Council?
Roll it.
Do it.
I'm gonna take a seat then, so I can watch it.
Especially when compared to other cities within California or even in the nation. We've been combating violent crime here in Stockton. We have found that really the reason we've had what we think is a significant amount of violent crime is based on gangs, gang activity, and guns. Since we've changed some of our policing tactics, since we've really focused on guns and gangs, and got into what I think is just smarter policing and building those community partnerships and relationships, we have seen some success. We've seen that our shootings actually have gone down from those earlier spikes. We know we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but we think that we've laid down a very solid foundation in our policing strategies that will help us in the long term really begin to address our gun and gang problem.
I think Stockton PD has really embraced the use of technology in the way we fight crime. It's also embraced our community partnerships where we're truly engaging the community in how we do business as a police department.
We've made extra efforts to engage the community so that we can have successful strategies, both getting their ideas, because they know better in many cases than we do as to what would work in their neighborhoods. And so we want to hear that. It's not the police department and the neighborhood, it's not even Officer Silva and the citizen, it's Joe and Fred.
In 2012, I began the Community Advisory Board, and it's the first of our kind here at the department. It's a community advisory board that reports directly to me, I meet with them monthly, made up of 24 members of our community, a cross-section. And what we do is we get together and we talk about issues within our community. And actually, they created their own mission statement, which is to increase police-community relationships. We knew we had to better rely upon volunteers, and we actually had a lot of members from our community coming to the police department or coming to us and saying, "We want to help, how can we help?" So what we've done is we've expanded our volunteer programs. We've got the Volunteers and Police Services, which are usually for those 40 years old and 40 and older. We have our junior cadets for our youth. We actually found we had a little bit of a gap for those in their 20s and 30s that wanted to come down and volunteer at the police department, maybe put on a uniform and go out in a patrol car. So we created also the Sentinel Program to fill that void.
All of these volunteer opportunities in the police department, it gives a citizen a chance to do some of the tangible things that the police department has to do, but it doesn't necessarily take a sworn officer to do. And then that frees us up to take the sworn officers to do some other necessary tasks out in the field and helps the police department be more efficient with what we do have.
There's probably not an agency out there that isn't being asked to do more with less. So it makes it even more important that you're using the most innovative current technologies to support what you do in your operations and make you very efficient and effective with your limited personnel resources. The ShotSpotter Gunshot Location System, which accurately pinpoints the location of gunfire within one geographic area of our city within seconds, and notifies the dispatch center. So we're often able to dispatch officers to the scene or to the area before we even begin receiving 911 calls about the incident from the community. It's helped us make several key arrests, and it's also helped in the prosecution of these cases.
When you get a shell casing from a location that you recovered, you then send it to evidence, and the IBIS techs will take that casing and they'll put it through the IBIS machine. That's the Integrated Ballistic Identification System. And they'll do an analysis on that casing. GATA from that is put into a system that then compares that casing to all other casings that have been put through the system.
I think what makes us unique in one sense here is our embracement of social media. We're using it to actively engage with our community better, and along with that, it becomes the way people report crimes or give us information or tips. And through a software we use called TipSoft, citizens are very easily capable now of sending tips to the police department anonymously, and several of those have led to major arrests.
Stockton PD has evolved our policing strategy into what I think is what's needed for 21st century policing. And that is moving beyond just what we call community policing and getting to real police legitimacy, procedural justice, and smarter policing in the way we do our business.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Well, we'll put this on the agenda next week and give you all a chance to look further into that unless you have any further questions at this point.
Madam Mayor, I just have a comment, too. If I may, I just want to point out that it was by no means any error on staff or clerk or anything about the quickness of getting us on the agenda today. It was fueled by the necessity of discussions that we had this morning, so I just want to make sure CJ didn't feel like he was pressured. But anyway, I did send him...
He was asked to put that on.
No, but I did send him some emails later going, "This is just so you're not surprised when this gets amended today." So I thought he had some forewarning, but just for the record, it wasn't anything he did. And then just to highlight for council, some of the topics that they're looking for this year are community-oriented policing, because this was on Biden Crimes, community-oriented policing, officer safety and wellness, both physical and mental, dedicated task forces, inter-agency collaborations, recruitment and retention, crime prevention and community education engagement, school violence and youth crime prevention, and use of data, innovative technology, and reporting systems, and community support and relations. And so they're looking for prestigious, top-notch law enforcement agencies that could possibly enhance any of those areas, and that's what we're looking forward to doing. And I will come back next week, but I'll stand for any questions that we have this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Mr. Kavner.
Chief, is the goal to have a video played at this conference, or is the goal to build a recruitment video? I mean, what's your priority?
My, so it's twofold, Madam Mayor and Councilman Kavner, I guess it's twofold. My first one is we've always had a vision to be an innovative model agency. So if we can put ourselves out there as an agency that people could look at as a model to doing things right, then internationally, nationally, that exposure out there would benefit us. So secondarily, it would be recruiting. But frankly, it comes down to, we're very proud of what we do, and we want to show it off. That's the bottom line.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm curious, the rest of council's opinion on, I mean, if there's a majority of us that weren't impressed enough to want to move forward with it, then we can save some other people's time, or if there's enough interest to hold off and investigate it more or then look at it again next week.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
My one thought is, you know, the police department, when they recruit, don't have the luxury the fire does. I've never known 400 and some police recruits come in wanting to get hired like we have in the fire. And let's face the facts, the police profession nowadays is a lot different than it was five years ago even. Those kids are out there with a bull's eye on their back half the time, and even in little town of Meridian, Idaho. I think this is something that tells the story of what, how our police department has became from one of turmoil and stuff to probably the best one in the state of Idaho, definitely. So I think anytime you can sell something in the public safety and get kids interested in it for recruitment, I think it, because the more people you can recruit, the better you get to select good people. So I think it's well worth, I mean, we've taken $22,000 to highlight something, you know, now and then, and I don't like throwing money after something like isn't working, but I think this is something that, I'm very proud of what the chief and his staff have done. They've not only under, not only done it, I'll get my tongue right here in a minute, this is good, but they did it understaffed in their administration. And I think that it's $22,500 well spent, that's my personal thing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, do we have the capability of performing, producing a similar quality interview and B-roll video soon with drone footage as well?
We have a communications person who's going on maternity leave in two months, maybe less, and a number of other products. So this, she took a look at this today and with the ownership of the raw product, with the things that the city is benefiting from it, she thought it was a good deal. Certainly, next week, she could share her perspective with you in person, we hope. But, so there's the benefit of another week. But I would agree, if there's hesitancy from this council, the chief needs to hear or hear that as well, so he can also convey that in the conversation for possible action next week.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I guess for me, what it boils down to is what's the cost to have a video ran at this conference, and what's the value to the city for doing that? I would just as soon spend the $22,500 on something to support our officers than a video. I think to Councilmember Palmer's point, we have a very capable staff here. We also have significant amount of talent in this valley that could produce something locally as opposed to bringing somebody from, it sounds like, overseas to shoot what looks like a very traditional interview B-roll video. So I don't know, Chief, what the value is in having this played at the conference. I would like to know more what that value is to you and your department. Maybe I misheard, but I wasn't aware that we've got a recruitment problem at the police department. If we do, I think that's something that's important that the council addresses as well. I just, I wonder how many people who are at a conference in Philadelphia see one of, it sounds like, 16 videos and then decide that they're going to come to Meridian and work for us, and what the cost of that is.
I think some of that is the honor or the prestige of being selected to do that. And since I was at a mayor's meeting a couple of months ago, we have one community that's hiring 200 police officers. Right now, there's a lot of agencies that are hiring, and to have that highlight and to have that prestige and to have that exposure, I think will only help our recruiting, it certainly won't hurt it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Where was the conference, or where is the conference?
In Philadelphia.
I just think, I mean, honor and prestige is great and all, but does Joe Schmo, citizen of Meridian, taxpayer, think, "Man, I'm glad that there is a video playing in a conference in Philadelphia that I got to help pay for today." I don't think that's their big priority. And I, again, the quality of the video, I think that we're capable of producing that if that's something that would be a great tool for us. I mean, it looked great, HD, all that, but I think that we're capable of producing a similar quality video and not having to pay that much for it. I just assume not, you know, waste this time having to put together a plan for it and then have us maybe shoot it down next week.
I think it would probably be good to hear from Casey about the value of highlighting our police department, marketing our community, and the value of the raw footage that she would be able to use in other regards. And it's impossible for probably myself or even the chief to speak on her behalf, and she certainly knows that, that part of it better than I do.
Madam Mayor, council, just to answer a couple more questions, it's really twofold as far as whether we can produce the video or not and have the staff time to do that is one thing. And then you can't really quantify the value on the other end of it, so you have to separate it out. And so you can't produce a video and say, "Hey, we got this video, would you play this at your conference?" That doesn't work that way. So it's really priceless. You can't put a figure on that. Now, whether it's in Philadelphia this year, whether it's in San Diego next year, it's an international conference, it's only held in four different places across the United States. And the reason why it's only held in four different places is because there's only four places that can accommodate that crowd. So that's why it's in Philadelphia this year. It rotates every four years. It'll be in Philadelphia every four years. Next year, it's, I believe it's in Orlando. So Philadelphia shouldn't be the reason for that. The closest one would be San Diego that we'd have access to. And then as far as the recruitment... And then as far as the recruitment issue is not specific to Meridian, but law enforcement has a recruitment issue. Based upon the negativity in the national spotlight, people are really questioning whether they want to do this job or not, and I cannot blame them based upon what they see day in and day out. But something in Meridian is different. Something in Meridian with our people and with our community and with our police officers are different, and we are successful. And if we could showcase that, then perhaps others across the United States can be successful as well. I realize it's a lot of money, and that's why I wanted to come in front of you today, because if there is no interest, then I don't want to waste anybody's time going forward further. And so that's, you know, I don't take any offense to any of the discussions that are happening today. It's a candid conversation, fully understand where we're coming from, but you can't get it if you don't ask. So that's why we're here.
So Chief, we'll put this on the agenda next week, and hopefully Casey can join us as well, and if your team has any further information you can provide, that would be helpful.
Madam Mayor, the, oh, one last thing I was going to say is, it's, the company that we're dealing with, my contact is in London, but it's based also in Washington and DC, so it's not an international necessarily company. So there is contacts with the United States as well. I'll speak to them on Thursday, and anything that they provide to me, I'll bring it back to council next week as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, future meeting topics. The first concert on Broadway is this Saturday. It's going to be a Sizzler. Okay, it's going to be hot, but hopefully you'll come out for the opener. It starts at 6:30, and at 7:00, Smooth Avenue Band will be playing. Certainly, as usual, you have the Cable One movie night and the youth farmer's market. And next Tuesday is the Budget Workshop, starting at 8:00 AM. Wednesday, the 19th, sorry.
19th.
19th, 8:00.
I was going to say, Tammy, no, and it's not, we don't want to be here from 8 to midnight.
Oh, come on. You know you love it. Okay, so last item on the agenda is executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we go into executive session, Esperado State Code 74, 206, 1A, 1F.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd?
Aye.
All ayes.